To inform people about our, our, our tax bond that we approved at the last meeting. So these started out going in the, in the first cycle, we have three billing cycles. So this is began being mailed out in the, in the first cycle this past week. We also developed a brochure to advise people about our Water Smart customer portal. And once these are all mailed out, we'll start mailing these out as well. Another thing I wanted to mention was that the Census Bureau contacted me advising us that we have very few census takers in our area, in the Portisville area. And so they asked to put a short message on our bill just to tell people how to sign up to be a census taker. So, but we're gonna go ahead and do that. Mr. Galvano approved it, so we'll go ahead and put it on our bills.
Okay. Any comments? Thank you. Moving on to item four, consider and discuss for possible approval the minutes of the workshop of the meeting, of the regular meeting from February 5th, 2020. Motion made by Mr. Starkey. Seconded by Mr. Avalos, for all those in favor.
Aye.
They are, and opposed, none, motion carries, thank you. Moving on to item number five, consider and discuss for possible approval the minutes of the special meeting from February 18th, 2020.
Assumed.
Motion made by Mr. Starkey. Seconded by Mr. Avalos, for all those in favor.
Aye.
They are, not opposed, motion carries, thank you. At this time, can we go ahead and move?
Item number nine?
Item number nine up.
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to present and move to item number nine, presentation by Mr. Quinton Anderson with Carl Riggs and Ingram CPAs and advisors. It'll be September 30th, 2019, financial audit for the Laguna Mottery Water District, financial statements.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name's Quinton Anderson, Deuce Johness, who worked out of our Brownsville office with your personnel on, on the audit of the financial statements. And I'm here to give you a brief summary of the information that's included in this report. We had an opportunity to meet, audit committee, audit committee session and discuss the information in this report. And I'm gonna go over a few of the key highlights. On page three, on page three of your report is the independent auditor's report. And it is the, what you engaged us to do was to, you know, examine your financial statements, which includes also the notes and related disclosures. And we've conducted our audit, and we've designed our test to give us sufficient evidence to render our opinion, and that opinion's on page four, that the financial statements fairly present in all material respects your financial position and the changes in financial position for the district during the past year. There's a lot of supplemental schedules that are required by, by government accounting standards, but also some schedules required by, by the state. And you've included these supplemental schedules within your report. We reviewed those also with management. And so I'd like to take you to a couple of schedules that will highlight the district's financial condition. Page nine and 10 is a very summarized presentation of the overall net position and changes in net position of all the funds of the district combined. And it'll show, kind of more importantly, that your overall assets were over $102 million. They've grown from the prior year, which were $96 million. Part of that growth, it was issued of some bonds, of which you had not spent the proceeds yet, about $5 million, that was included in, in cash. And then you had projects that you completed in your capital asset project. So you'll see the increase in assets with the corresponding increase in liabilities because of the bonds that were issued. You see the total liabilities changed from almost $28 million to $34 million. But more importantly is your net position. Your net position, which is the difference between your assets and liabilities, is about $68 million. And so you've got an unrestricted net position of $9.8 million compared to $9.2 million. And your overall net position increased slightly from the prior year, and you can see that on page 10, where there's a consolidated presentation of total revenues and total expenses. And revenues exceeded expenses by about $182,000. So net position grew a little bit from the prior year. Revenues increased, there were some rate changes on wastewater services during the year that had an impact on that, and then there's some corresponding increases in expenses during the prior year. That's a, that's a very, that's a consolidated presentation of all the funds of the district together. And then you have some individual fund presentations that begin on page 12. Kind of one of your larger funds is the general fund. And it shows that revenues in the general fund grew from $9.5 million to $10.7 million. The biggest increase was in the wastewater services that we mentioned, the change in, in rates. And then expenditures were about $8.5 million. So there was a, there was a $2.1 million differential between revenues and expenses from the prior year. And you transferred out some funds for, for debt service purposes. And your fund balance in the general fund grew by, by $900,000. So ended the year with about $7.7 million in your general fund. There's three other funds that, that your finance department accounts for, and one is a debt service fund on page 13. And you'll see, you know, your primary source of revenue in the debt service fund are property taxes. And they're, they were about $1.3 million. And you have expenditures of about $2.6 million. The biggest part, of course, is paying bond principal and interest. And then, and you have the transfer in from the general fund of $1.2 million to help with that debt service. And your overall debt service fund balance grew by about $400,000. There's $3.5 million in fund balance, all of which is reserved and restricted for debt service. Your other big fund is the capital projects fund in exhibit six on page 14. And, and this, this fund is, is the fund that you had, you issued $5.4 million in, in debt during the year. And that's still mostly in fund balance at the end of the fiscal period, which was September 30th. And that's part of the increase in your overall cash position. But those funds are, are to be spent, and some of which have been. And the, a new fund that you created during, during the year on page 15 is a meter project fund. And so you issued $2.5 million in debt during the year for, for your meter project, and had spent about $1.7 million, had a little bit of that left at the end of the fiscal period, and probably have spent some of that subsequent to year end. So that, that's a recap of, of, you know, the primary funds for the district. As we reviewed this with, with your committee and with management, you know, I think we pointed out that you have a, you have a healthy fund balance in, in your, in your general fund, representing, you know, a good reserve for a district your size. And again, your overall net position grew, improved a little bit from the prior year, and your general fund balance improved from the prior year. The notes to the financial statements include a lot of detailed information about your capital assets and long-term debt. And so you can look at those schedules and the supplemental schedules. And they'll give you amortization schedule, and amortization schedules on all of the debt that you're paying in the back of the report. So there's a lot of useful information besides just the routine financial statements included in the report. And then the last section of the report is, is a report on, on compliance and some control-related matters. And we didn't have any instances of non-compliance that are reported during our testing. And we found, we, we made some recommendations on, on control-related matters, but we didn't identify any matters that we considered to be material weaknesses in controls. That's, that's important for your, for your district as well. So, that's a big report. I know, I know that if you have any questions, we, I'd be glad to try to address them now or at a different point. I know that your finance department is in well-position to address those questions as well. But, you know, that's an overview of the financial statement. I think the financial statement reflects a healthy financial position. A lot of activity, you know, there's a lot, a lot of debt that you're servicing, and that you will be servicing for a while. The operations reflect, you know, favorable financial condition.
Comments, questions?
Where are we at as far as debt service?
That's a good question. Let's take a look at, one of the, one of the supplemental schedules is a budget comparison on page 53. So if you look at that, Mr. Avalos, this is the budget that the board has approved for the general fund, where you have about $10 million in revenues, and you had $8.5 million in expenses. You have a separate fund that you, that you use for servicing your debt, and that is presented on page 57, okay? So your, your annual debt service has, has been about $2.6 million, if you see that on page 57. $1.8 million in, in principal and another $700,000 in interest. You're able to, to pay part of that from property tax revenues, which are about $1.4 million. And then the rest of that, you know, you're getting nearly $1.3 million from your general fund as a transfer over. So if you looked at your expenditures in the general fund of $8.5 million, and let's jump back to page 53, and then you see there's an additional transfer out of $1.2 million for, for debt service, you're, and still you're able to grow your fund balance in the, in the general fund by about $900,000. But, you know, the debt service that's not being paid by property taxes, you know, to me, out of, out of $10.7 million in revenues, it represents about a little over 10%. Because there's $1.2 million that would be transferred out of your general fund. I don't know if that's-
On top of the property taxes?
Yes, sir. Right, so it is.
Or off of about 20%.
Right. So if we, if we looked at, at your debt service at $2.6 million, which is principal and interest, okay? You used $1.2 of your general fund money to pay that, and you used about $1.3 million of property tax revenue to pay that. So you, you probably want to include the property taxes as a source of funds. You have about $12 million of money, you have access to to service debt, and you had $2.6 million in debt service, which is, which is, you know, about 20%. That's about what you estimated.
Theoretically, you're still on the one there for, on that.
Well, yes, I would take a look at your general fund balance, which is about $9 million on the annual budget of about $10 million. And you have room within that general fund, fund balance for, for some additional debt service. I believe that's a true, true statement.
One thing I have is, some of the conclusions that you drew is that we lack the detailed written financial accounting at the end of the year. It looks like there were some corrective actions that we took on our end in order to delegate some of those responsibilities internally.
Right.
I don't know if either us or you would like to elaborate on that a little bit?
Right. We did, we did make some recommendations on page 77 in the report, probably what you're referring to, Mr. Starkey, where, you know, the biggest part of your, you had $102 million in total assets when we looked at that summarized exhibit. $80 million of that is capital assets and infrastructure. We made some recommendations on, on creating a process of, of updating those schedules and reconciling those schedules more timely throughout the year. And you've made some, in response to that, kind of re-assigned personnel in order to cover the duties that would, that would be, we think would help you get that done in a more timely fashion.
So what specifically, I guess, are we referring to in regards to written documentation pertaining to these capital, you know, assets? Are you talking about depreciation, maintenance, expenditures associated with?
So you have, you know that you had a lot of projects going on, you had a lot of capital outlay and asset additions throughout the year. It's a big number, and you need to add that to your depreciation schedule, to your records. And we're saying, time is running out, and you're, don't, don't-
Cram it all into the D and D.
Don't let that happen at year end or after year end, because it stalls the financial reporting process.
In your professional opinion, do you think we have the adequate support in regards to our staff in order to accomplish and achieve that goal?
Right. I, I think, you know, you're-
Because that's also, sorry to cut you off, but in your, in your notes, you mentioned that we might want to consider adding a staff member or delegating some of the responsibility throughout staff, which it looks like our action plan indicated we chose that option.
Right. And I, and I think, you know, I'd, I'd have to defer to finance to, to-
Of course.
To tell you, they feel like they're adequately staffed. The action plan they're putting in place, I think, will address it. There are also, you had some turnover in some accounting positions at the beginning of the year, and so I think that caused a little bit of delay in, in having to use people in areas where, where they might have otherwise given their attention to this process. So I think probably staffing is okay with the reassignment of duties, so.
Maybe in our next finance report, you can elaborate on that a little bit in a future meeting. If that was the only thing that caught my attention. Thank you for the little bit of that, no question.
Yes, okay.
I compliment staff.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.
I'd like to go back and resume to item number six, General Managers Report.
I wanted to, Mr. Chairman, members of board, I wanted to mention that the bond presentations that we've been doing have been very positive, and the last one we had was a little bit of more questions and answers from us, which I like, because it was a challenge, you know, asking all these questions, and I, we gave them what we knew about the water districts that seem to have a lot of answers for everybody. But some people took it as a little bit of criticism for improvement, you know, but then some of us are the opposite, like thinking that the criticism was not too good for the district. But again, it's the same, same people that were asking questions a few years back that were against the bonds and all that, that had the most questions, that were a little bit on the negative side. But the responses that we gave were actually transparent, truthful, and, and everything that we know about what's going on with the district that they didn't seem to know, you know? They were assuming and saying, I've heard about this and that, and they didn't know the actual happenings with the district, you know, that actually happened. We're just saying that they were hearing from other parties about this, that it wasn't getting done, or that wasn't getting done, but it was incorrect information that they were giving. So I think it's, it's been positive, and I think we're doing good with the timeframe that we have now, that we still have plenty of time to keep going out there and, and doing more presentations, especially with the bond committee. See, Charles, you're funny. Anyhow, I think you're gonna be there tomorrow morning with us, and the bond, bond committee is still having to do some more work with, for us. So in saying this, it's, it's looking good, you know? I believe that we're in the right track of presenting all these needs that we have. And of course, I know that Herb's been very active with us, and trying to, Alex has been there too, to the meetings. So in, in saying this, Herb's always looking for something to better, you know, improve on the presentations. And I like that, because we learn more stuff every time, and there's always room for improvement. But I wanted to just mention that it's been positive. The majority of the, of the presentations, I say 95% to 98% has been very positive. Because I wanted to bring that to board members.
That is the key, if I may, if I may comment. That is the key, hopefully that is our, that, hopefully that is our success rate. But we're so close to it that sometimes we think that we, we know, we think it's right, we're advocating and we're pushing for it. Sometimes we're too close to it and, and not understanding the other side of it, and not aware of why there is opposition and what they're opposing. And sometimes we have to step back and analyze and think like the opposition does, and why would they think like that?
Right.
And sometimes we have to reevaluate, and it's not an excuse, but it helps us to push our point and make us stronger.
Right.
That should be the goal that we should walk away from this today, is push this harder and stronger. If we're all on board and we all believe in this, and that's what it takes to make the district that much better, that's what we have to sell. And a little speed bump can't slow us down.
Right, right. And educating, just educating the public so they know what's actually happening, not what to hear, here and there, you know, like I heard this and that. But we're actually providing all the best that we can, information that's not out there yet.
I'd like to make a comment in regard to the past presentation. I, first of all, I apologize that I was not there to defend the work that we've been very hardworking through the last year and a half or so. But I also would like to see if it's possible to correct the misinformation that got out, okay? Because I think it's important, I think it's important because there was some misinformation that was said at that meeting that led me to crack. And I feel like now, I'm, I feel like I'm in the management role of that, so.
Alicia, that's, that's our, our direction.
So, so I would like to see if we can send the correct information to them, but also send it to Channel 4 to publish that information and have them-
Don't do an update, don't do an update.
Yeah, correct it for the press.
A factual update.
Yeah, factual update.
I wanted to say that I did have the opportunity to follow up with them. They asked me for confirmation on, on some of the, the numbers, and so that allowed me the opportunity to follow up and to, to give them the, the actual number. And so I was able to, to correct two of the numbers that, that they threw out the, at the, at the, at the presentation that we were not able to, that we did not respond to because we didn't have the, the exact figures. And so I was able to, on, on Monday, send them that, the, the correct information. So we can, we can follow up with that information and, and send that to the news agencies.
And thank you. We had to stress those factual facts that get them out there. Facts are what they are.
Eddie, what were those corrections or the numbers?
It was, one of them was, the first question was, how much of a, of your property tax base is on South Padre Island? So at the meeting, they claimed that that was 90%. And when I was able to research that, the actual figure was 76%. The other figure that they claimed was that South Padre Island represents 50% of the, of the usage. And I was able to clarify that and, and remind them that the, when we build a facility, we have to build, build it for a peak usage, not, not average usage. But on an average basis, it is 50%. But there are times when, when South Padre Island causes 65% of our demand. And so when we build a facility, it has to be for the peak demand. And so I was able to tell them that it's 65% is with-
And that's the end user, and they're the end user of the line.
That's right.
Well, and this could also be pointed out to them, that if it weren't for the island and the tourism, in the summertime, we wouldn't have to be doing this at all. So I mean, they're driving the need, but they don't really feel responsible that they need to pay for it.
And I guess my two cents would be, anytime the goal is, you know, facts, information, and transparency for the community of which we all serve, you know, that's, that's, that's the ideal that we all should strive for. I think we all are striving for, and I think that's, that's the, the golden thread that binds all of this together.
We represent the whole system.
Yeah, and I commend everybody, you know, Director Houston, Director Avalos, for their presence at these. And then, you know, you, I mean, Carlos, and anyone that's going to these meetings, you know, I mean, we all are specialists in our own little world, where we have something that we're really good at. And it may not be public speaking, but you guys take this on to go out and put yourself out there. Trust me, I know, you know, it, that's a tough seat to sit in, and you guys continue to sit in it, and you represent this district and this community with class and integrity. And I want to commend you and everyone that does that for doing the right thing, and, and, you know, and I just believe God's gonna take care of the rest. But as long as we keep showing up and doing the best we can, take corrective measures to make sure that the correct information is out there, you know, then our community will, will make their decision on election.
Yep, and that's what it's all about.
That's what it's all about.
Yep, thank you.
There were a couple of concerned citizens and wanted to know why we didn't produce quality, good quality water. And what they were referring to was RO water compared to the tap water. And we did inform them that we did have a superior water rating from TCEQ. And I don't think there's any way that we can produce RO water to, to be able to go through our infrastructure.
Not without the-
No.
No, and-
Not without the system they don't want to pay for?
We produce superior water, and that's why we drink it at our board meetings. And we have one water plant with a microfiltration system, and the hope is that we'll have two in the near future. So you guys, again, are doing a great job of, you know, toeing the line and keeping it about education, and, you know, not crossing over the threshold of advocacy, and everything I've heard is, you know, example of that. So again, I commend you, and that's really all I can say.
Paul, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I was just gonna ask, is there anyone who can check how many utilities, water providers are out there? How many, what's the percentage that get superior water rating?
10%.
10%. There you go. Throughout the state.
10% throughout the state.
Throughout the state.
And to be at the end of the line and still maintain a superior rating, you know, I mean, we're the, we're the last, you know, house on the block, ladies and gentlemen. We all know that. And, and again, to have a superior rating is, is, you know, really a testament to everyone that, that comes here and works every day. It's not a testament to us sitting behind this side, you know, we just get to eat the great food and vote on a couple of deals. But you guys are, you guys are killing it. Keep it up. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you again. And that's all I have to report.
Thank you. I'd like to move along, closing. Moving to item seven, Director of Operations Report.
Moves approved, always, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, as usual, my monthly report is included, comparing the previous month, January, with the month from, or the year 2019. There was a decrease in service calls and, and calls for January. A lot of that was attributed to phone calls that are made customer service, which is informational. There was about 27 less calls than change of meters. We had about 16 less calls for that. Faulty transmitters, there were 21 different calls, or less calls for that. And reinstating, I'm sorry, checking repair leaks, that was 15 calls less than we had last year. So that was a total of about 79 different calls that we had this, less this year than, than the previous year. In the collection side, we had an increase of about six calls. And the increase was in preventive maintenance, but we also had- And the increase was in preventive maintenance, but we also had less calls for sewer taps. So, basically, it's running pretty normal as far as last year and this year. The second report I had was on the update on the final AMI meter project cost. You saw the numbers that the auditors presented. We did spend quite a bit more at the end of, as of February fourteenth, the balance on that is a hundred and eighty-three thousand three hundred and thirty-eight. We're pretty much through, well, not pretty much, we are through with the installation of the meters. So, this money that's left over, we've been discussing as to what to do with it. Once we would decide what we need to do with it, we want to look at a project that is in most need, their immediate need, that we can contribute the hundred and eighty-three thousand into. Let TCEQ know so that they can go ahead and give us the okay. And once that's done, we'll go ahead and get your permission to continue with that.
What if we just advance pay our bond down? Can we do that?
We could do that too, that's what the board chooses.
Or seek a TCEQ approval for a proof project?
Was there a project on that? Not on the bond list, but we had the bond list, right? But then we had those other projects that we're going to appreciate over time, we've went with the bonds, I think there were lift stations that were under rate bear, right?
TCEQ has to approve what you can do with the funds.
It was TCEQ money, right?
No.
No.
No, this was a loan we got through.
It's approved because you're spending it outside of what the realm, the realm was strictly project oriented meters. That's what the money was approved for. That's what was approved for.
Who approved the money? He gave it to us.
Water Development Board.
Okay, that's what I'm saying. Could it be allocated for a lift station?
You can't just throw it into general funds.
TCEQ decides where the water development.
The balance of this, what you can approve, you cannot just freely spend this money or throw it into the general operations account.
But it could be used for lift station rehab or no, we'd have to, I mean, obviously bounce it off of them, but I guess that's where I was going with my thought. Just to find out, we have some lift stations that are outside of that scope of work that we're hoping gets done that could be.
Yes, sir, I believe so.
But I'll let you guys do the legwork.
Yeah, we submit a request for use of surplus funds to the district's review team at TCEQ and then they'll approve the change in fund.
What has we for capital project?
The third item that I wanted to bring to you, gentlemen, was the tower climbing. We had five individuals that were certified as tower climbers. We have three of them with us today. We have Pedro Gonzalez, he's with the construction department. And we have Mr. Juan Mayorga with the distribution. And Mr. Daniel Gonzalez, he's with electrical.
They all just got certified?
Yes, sir.
So, we did like, did you guys do the annual race we usually do with them? No, not yet.
No, not yet.
Sometimes I'll show up to that race.
I compliment and appreciate, I'm scared of that step.
Mr. Lopez, no towers or what? No towers or what?
Neither.
Me neither.
I compliment, that's a lot.
They were certified and they have a certificate for the next two years. We went this route because in the past, none of them had any kind of formal training in tower climbing or much less help and rescue if something happened to one of them, they were stranded up there. But, they have received this type of training and I for one am very happy that they got this because I'm like you, I don't like heights. But, I'm glad that they got this training. I think Pedro Gonzalez, he's capable of being able to train other individuals, although he can't certify them, but he can train them. And the other four individuals are certified as well and they have received that certificate.
Does that have any impact with insurance or anything? Or does that help with some of our insurance?
I don't think, my biggest fear in the past had been that they were climbing these towers.
Safety first.
Exactly, and they had no prior training. I was just concerned, if something happened to one of them up there, who's going to get them done?
And again, there's different departments involved, like the electricians or antennas up there and the welders, construction, and then the watersite. So, we're going to work out together.
And distribution also, we have the AMI repeaters up in the towers. As a matter of fact, one of them is down. So, once they get the equipment that's been ordered or coming up for approval for you gentlemen, once they get that, we'll be able to go up in the tower and take care of that repeater. Right now, what's happening with that is a lot of the meters in that area not being able to transmit to the cloud so we can go ahead and build. So, what we have to do is we have to get somebody to go out there and be able to pick up the readings as we're driving by. And as a matter of fact, even before then, they would have to go down to each individual meter. We just had a gentleman from Mueller that came in and gave us training so that we could go ahead and do the drive-by and pick up the reading. But, we shouldn't even have to do that with this new system. It should be automatically reporting. Unfortunately, that antenna is down, so we're going to need to go up there and weld it back up. That pretty much, I'm sorry.
Do you gentlemen stand up?
Pedro Gonzalez in the center and Daniel.
Right. I got Daniel in the race. Great job, all three of them. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Lopez, you might want to look into how other cities handle, you know, certification and insurance and things like that, stat like that, because there might be some opportunities that we might be.
And recertification, you know?
Yes.
How long with this sort of, I'm sure you looked into all that. And then lastly, it might be a good PR piece to, you know, to shed some light on those guys, perfect, I love it.
They are.
Shine a light on them.
Hold on, they all were like, go up a little bit, go up.
Shut up, look at that, there's no way.
Go up. That's just not a problem.
I'm not doing that.
That was before certification.
Is it really important, you guys looking so poofy for what we need this, for us?
Yes.
We didn't have it before, it hadn't been born and so, not even, yeah, not even a third that we had.
We'll get that equipment, whatever it may be.
Do we have it now or we still need to get it?
It's coming up for your approval here in one of the items.
It's in here today.
What item number is it?
I believe.
Just wink when it's turned, it's nineteen. Yeah, classes mean nothing.
Wait in our workshop.
Oh, we can't disclose any, I probably just broke the rules, sorry, Ron. But anyway, I will say this, the class means nothing if we don't supply the equipment, so.
That's correct.
I'm prepared to do that whenever.
Thank you. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Moving along to, thank you.
You can be confined, sir.
Moving along to item eight, District Engineers Report, Charles.
All right, yes, I guess the first item I have on here is the capital project coordination with Texas Water Development Board. We do have a new engineering reviewer, Benny Volosami, I think. She basically replaced Nikki Hyes, who's been our engineering reviewer since I've been working here at the water district. So, we ended up going up to Austin, meeting with the new engineering reviewer to talk about the status of our projects in general, including our lift station revenue notes, the upcoming projects that we have on our bond measure. And so, one of the actions that came out of that meeting was to already prepare the project information form for the water plant number one. And so, we can go ahead and get it on the antenna and huge plan for this fiscal year to get an invitation to plan up to open one. So, we're working on that right now. The deadline for that is going to be March first, so we can start that, you know, try to explode that.
Stick our nose in our own kind of thing.
Yeah, so that's kind of the main point from the first bullet. The second one is we are proposing a lot of scope changes between our revenue notes. We have a more refined cost estimate. We also identify the need to accelerate that Highway one hundred gravity main because of the point coming in behind the little heights. And so, we're trying to get that portion of work on our current revenue, which has as a result, we need to bump some of these lift stations over to a future. So, that's all part of the filter vision set. We're trying to make a request. And so, with all those, there's going to be an environmental review that needs to be approved prior to them approving the engineering feasibility report. So, pretty much today, we'll try to present that change of scope and, you know, request those approvals from this path forward. And so, that's basically kind of the engineers report in a nutshell with how, you know, all three bullets are intertwined. And then we can dive into more details on the amendments as we think those action items. Any other questions or?
I think that completes.
All right. Yeah, I conclude the report.
Thank you, Charles.
Thank you, Charles.
Item nine, we've already presented. Item ten, consider and discuss for possible approval, the financial audit report of Laguna Mottery Water District's financial statements for the fiscal year ended September thirtieth, twenty nineteen. That was a presentation from Karen Riggs.
Yes, if you give me a chance to comment on which, the question you asked for about, do we feel as staff, do we feel that we need to add personnel or anything like that? And my recommendation is no. I did have to replace two of my staff members during the year and that caused some relearning of, reassignment of jobs. And the staff accountant, who's now helping me with the audit, he was both training people and learning a new position at the same time. But, I anticipate that those problems won't be coming in the coming year. I've also taken additional tasks off his desk so that that will free him up to make sure that we don't have this issue again next year.
Perfect. Thank you. Good explanation.
Motion for approval made by Mr. Houston, second by Mr. Starkey, are all those in favor?
Aye.
There are, any opposed? None? Motion carries, thank you. Thank you. Moving along to item eleven, consider and discuss for possible approval of amendment number one, the Freeza Nichols, Inc. for Lift Station number twenty-five rehabilitation, state highway one hundred gravity main route study and force main assessment. Welcome.
Very good. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Board, I'm Charles Kucherko with Freeza Nichols Engineering. Appreciate you all having us here tonight. This is going to be the first amendment of the three contracts that we have with the district currently. First one on the agenda is a contract to rehabilitate Lift Station twenty-five, evaluate the SH one hundred gravity main that Charles was discussing earlier, and then also doing some force main assessments. We had some scope changes on that, on that contract. One is that we originally broke Lift Station twenty-five out of the Water Development Board projects because the pumps went down and so it was considered critical to move that forward and get it repaired before all the other lift stations. My understanding is operations been able to manage that situation and so we were able to slow that project down and we'd like to reincorporate it in with the larger lift station project. The other one is we did complete the task for the SH one hundred gravity main and that was included in the evaluation, the revenue bond evaluation report. And so, that task was completed. During the course of the project, we had, we had a subconsultant that came and cleaned the force mains for the district. And then they were supposed to also evaluate the force mains using some technology that would measure thickness of pipe and things like that. They had a problem with that technology, it broke during construction or during the task. That company that created it wasn't able to fix it and so they were not able to move forward with that. But, we were able to assess through cleaning the line that Lift Station twenty-five force main was in poor condition and needed to be replaced. But, since they couldn't complete that task, they, we did not pay for them and therefore we did not use that, those funds. So, in summary, what the resulting amendment for that contract is, is that we are removing all remaining funds for the Lift Station twenty-five rehabilitation, removing all those funds and removing all the credits for the task not completed for assessing the force main, which results in the net credit of a hundred and five thousand and three dollars, some change.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's a credit?
I'm sorry, yes. Or I'm sorry.
You're removing eighty-nine thousand, seventy-nine dollars and forty-four cents?
Eighty-nine thousand, forty-four cents. Yep, I looked at the wrong number. Eighty-nine thousand dollar credit.
I mean, I'll take a hundred and five credit. But, I'm grateful with an eighty-nine.
Eighty-nine thousand dollar credit.
I feel like you're giving us money because you're not ready to take more.
Does this require action?
Yes. Well, then, I move to approve the amendment, which would add Lift Station number twenty-five rehabilitation to the project and issue us a credit of eighty-nine thousand, seventy-nine dollars and forty-four cents.
Correction, we're completely, once, once we have this amendment, this contract will be closed completely, all tasks complete.
Oh, so there is no, I was looking at the next pages to see, all right, they're giving us eighty-nine, are they getting ready to take two hundred and fifty or?
Yeah, we're going to discuss that in a minute, but there's a lot of moving pieces, but this is the first piece of giving money back.
I understand.
I have a, just a general comment that I shared with Charles earlier, that we're aware of the electric demand that's going to be put on that by the development, but I also mentioned the possible development of purely, the street that's going to be attached toward the lake is potentially going to launch at forty-eight. It's going to take some time to get that done, but we need to make sure that we build that with those specs in mind as well, which is something to see.
Yeah, as far as the proposed water model, we need to make sure we account for that compensation.
There's going to be, potentially there's going to be commercial and residential while we're on that, on the off the side. It's south side.
Okay, I know, I know when we modeled it, you know, in any undeveloped areas, we did, you know, project a demand. We just need to make sure that it matches the development that's occurring, make sure that we didn't say, okay, it's going to be single family residential, but now it's going to be multifamily or something.
It's going to be commercial and residential.
Okay, we can verify.
Yeah, I mean, depending on how the development, I mean, there's a potential there could be discharge of force main to this gravity main as a part of the project or, you know, we're out.
We're making changes now.
You're suggesting upsizing it now, upsizing it even more now, is your comment, is it suggested, is that correct?
Well, I'm not sure what the demands are going to be, so it's something that we'll get forward maybe.
Yes, yes, since our design year is twenty forty, I mean, we would account for that projected development size in our plans.
We should be covered, but we can, we can verify. Like the new development that y'all mentioned that's going in, that was already included, so.
I have a question. There was thirty-two thousand in this for the subcontractor, right?
Right.
Whose stuff broke and it turned out we didn't actually need to use it.
Right.
So, how much money is there in stuff, the other stuff that we might potentially be able to not need to use? Sort of worries me when I see like, oh, it turns out thirty-two thousand bucks, we didn't need to use it. If their stuff didn't break, we would have paid thirty-two thousand bucks, but we wouldn't have needed to pay thirty-two thousand bucks, right?
Need is subjective.
So, that sort of stuff and other things, you know what I mean?
Right, no. Need is subjective and we did break that out, so it was a transparent number, even in our original proposal, it was a number that we broke out as a supplementary, supplementary cost. So, it was a transparent number that if we don't use it, we don't get paid for it. So, it wasn't ever really in our contract unless we were specifically approved by the district to use those dollars. Now, the force main assessment, it would have benefited us to have more information on some of these force mains. The force mains that we identified, like seventeen and twenty-five, we identified those based on, one, if the district was having to do repairs on those already, but also when they were cleaning them, they were actually having line breaks during the cleaning process when they were pressurizing them and scrubbing them. So, that's how we identified it. But, there may be, we would have more information on more of the force mains to make better decisions. But, seeing that all the needs that the district does have, it was a kind of a decision to, hey, let's reallocate those funds to some, to some other improvements. So, yeah, it wasn't a hidden cost, you know, it was transparent from the, from the original contract.
Understood. So, again, I make a motion to approve amendment number one with Freeza Nichols Incorporated for Lift Station number twenty-five rehabilitation on Highway one hundred gravity main.
Motion made by Mr. Starkey. Second by Mr. Ablos, are all those in favor?
Aye.
There are, none opposed, motion carries, thank you. Thank you, Charles. Moving along to item number two. Thank you, Charles. Moving along to item number 12, consider and discuss for possible approval of amendment number one with Freez and Nichols, Inc., for engineering reports to support bond election.
More credit coming, yeah.
More credit coming, that's correct. So this contract was the original contract to help the, the district identify, evaluate their facilities and develop a report and cost estimates in support of the, the tax bond program. During, during that process, additional facilities were added to the evaluation such as the, the raw water pump station, that water plant number two was included, which is now part of the, the bond program or the tax bond program. We identified during the evaluation of water plant number one, that it was constructed really close to the wastewater treatment plant, which is a violation of TCQ rules. It's never been, been brought up and we kind of discussed that at one time, but we didn't want to propose improvements to water treatment plant number one and put it on a tax bond and then when we actually go into design, the TCQ have an issue with the water plant being that close. So we went ahead and we, we met personally with the TCQ. We filed an exception request, they accepted it with some, some, you know, additional reporting and things like that. But that, that took some effort and coordination with that exception request. We evaluated the Isla Blanca wastewater treatment plant and those improvements. We looked at the chlorine residual and the water age, we added that task to the modeling task because it was a concern on, on the island, so we included that in our report. Item number five is chlorine dioxide addition at water treatment plant number one. Initially, the district was planning on doing all that work themselves. We submitted the exception request to the TCQ and they came back and said, you need to have some sort of engineering report submitted to the TCQ to document everything. And so that task is in support of providing that report to get through, to get approved for construction for the district to, to construct those facilities, water plant number one. And then number six is additional services for the elevated storage tank control valve, adding that to SCADA. So all, all of these were, were new tasks that were unidentified in the original scope.
Motion for approval by Mr. Houston.
I just have one comment before I continue with the action. It's number two, to elaborate a little bit more on this 19,941 dollar exceptions request and miscellaneous support.
Miscellaneous support, there was actually a lot that came up. So when the, when we filed the exception request with the TCQ, they came back with comments and they said, hey,
Too close.
What do you think?
Okay.
What do you think we should do and require of the district to make sure that there's no issues with having the wastewater treatment plant that close? And so there was actually kind of a whole lot of coordination that had to be done as far as setting the standards for the district that we were comfortable with, but also that wasn't too onerous on the district from a reporting side. And it's, I think there were some other tasks in there that I don't.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's set a baseline for what actual, what actually is paid.
Right. And the CT, we're doing the, the contact time study for the revised flows for water plant number one, along with adding the chlorine dioxide, so that was also additional task.
Take some heat off your seat, Charles, and put some heat on your seat. Is this number justified for this miscellaneous?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's based on the, the hours of, of effort communicated and so it's, it's great.
All right. Sorry to hold it up. I'll second.
Motion made by Mr. Houston, second by Mr. Starkey. Are all those in favor?
Aye.
They are? None opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Let's move along to item 14, consider and discuss for possible approval, budget amendment for engineering services. We need 13. Oh, excuse me. 13, consider and discuss for possible approval of amendment number one, the Freez and Nichols, Inc., for Port Isabel wastewater treatment plant, sludge holding tank and lift stations rehabilitation.
Very good. Just to, just to go back on that, that one comment on the, you know, the amendment amount, all of these tasks were completed without having a contract. And so pretty much we tracked every dollar that was spent on that specific task. So it was something that wasn't, it wasn't, it was something that we've already completed. And so we know exactly what we, what we spent on each, each task. So it's not something we were projecting with any type of contingency.
No, I understand.
Okay. The, the final amendment is to the actual Texas Water Development Board lift station rehabilitation project, which has been a pretty, pretty dynamic and fluid scope over the past year. We had started out with, with rehabilitating 14 lift stations and through the, of the evaluation of the force mains, also reprioritizing some of the, the lift stations that the district is having more problems with, but also some of the new information that came out of the, the tax bond reporting, because we did evaluate some other lift stations. The SH 100 gravity main improvements came into play and so with a lot of moving pieces, we almost kind of re-scoped what we were going to do within the, the Texas Water Development Board project. And Charles, I don't know if you want to, if you want to mark it up to show.
Yeah, I mean, I'm used to to explain the board what's changed in the district's place.
So five out of the 14 lift stations were, were removed. So we're removing lift station three, seven, 16, 24, and water treatment plant number two. So those were removed just because repriorit, reprioritizing, prioritizing some of the other projects.
So they're just going to get those over to the district's revenue.
Yep.
And that's basically the, the idea. And then we turn around and we're going to bring this, that over to the current revenue.
And then five new projects were added, which we added the, the replacement of lift station 17, which was in poor condition during the evaluation. Lift station 25, which was also identified as in poor condition. Lift station 30, which is the one right here by Isabel's Cafe, it's been a, a real maintenance issue and so we're going to decommission that completely by installing the gravity main. So that will no longer be a problem for the operators. And then the SH 100 gravity main, which was kind of discussed earlier, it's important that we, we construct that line now because lift station 14 and lift station 25 improvements kind of have to be phased with that gravity sewer main, plus the, the additional flows that are becoming it with the development. And so that was shifted over as being a priority over some of the rehabilitation of some of these other lift stations. And then we also had the, the Port Isabel wastewater treatment plant drain, some changes on the, on the drain piping. That's overwhelming that lift station currently, so we're going to make some improvements there. So those projects were, were added to the scope. And so what, the way we approached it, just because there was so much scope change, is we evaluated everything that had been completed to date because we had made progress on some of the lift station design towards getting to the, the engineering feasibility report that needs to go to the district. And so we looked at the projects that were remaining, how many hours it's going to take to take them to 100%. And then we evaluated the, the new scope, how many hours it's going to take to complete those projects and we pretty much came up with a, a brand new scope number. And that's the number that you, you see here as the amended amount.
133.92.
Actually, there's, there's, which Daisy and Tom and I just were quoting, so there was one of which I came out after work back in the series.
Yeah, our, our apologies, we had an administrative.
We're talking about fluid situation.
Technicality.
All kind intended.
So.
Oh, 151.
We, we have a standing biweekly meeting with Charles and, and, and staff. And during that meeting, it was discussed that we wanted to add in lift station 37 and, and one back into the, the rep, the bond program or the Texas Water Development Board loan program with the idea that based on our estimates, all these projects together may exceed the loan amount. But what we, we talked about is providing those as alternate bid items. So if bids do come in well, then the district can choose to accept those, those projects to be in the, in the project or they cannot accept it and keep the project within budget. So pretty much we're over designing to see if we can get more into it.
There's the option of not counting the fluid cap, or use the surplus funds for the aim on the, you know, the primary.
So the difference in all these figures, if this gets approved, is 60,194.26, is that right?
Yes.
It was 41 until this got taken into account. The old football player can use the math. Hey, should have been an engineer.
All I ask, because I just don't like walking in the meeting and saying that. That is very upsetting that, I mean, email it or something. I, I, I know it's a comment made.
And just to explain, I'm sorry, just to explain why the number went up, it was administrative on error on our part. We met on our two, our biweekly meeting and Charles mentioned adding these lift stations in and we added our scope in, but since we, where we scoped the entire project, we didn't go back to our electrical sub and say, hey, we're adding lift station 37 and one back into the project and we.
But it was available before the meeting, though, is my only comment.
Yeah, right.
And that's what I would like to have beforehand, that's all. I think the rest of the board would agree.
Yeah.
That's, that's the reason for the increases, that we just didn't have his revised number.
It was just to have revised, so we had, I mean, that's how.
All day till four o'clock was available. That's my comment.
Good question. The, the item says something about the Port Isabel wastewater treatment plant, sludge holding tank. What are we doing?
Well, I just use the same wording from the original.
But we're not doing anything.
No, we're doing nothing. I, I just use that to make the wording in the statement.
I was trying to find where, where that was.
No, we, we took the "have this hope" in the original contract.
Yeah, that was the root, I'll just go.
Yeah, well, that was fine. Well, the only reason I use that wording is because that's, that was the wording of the original contract I got through, so I kept it in there as a.
Okay.
So 60,194.26. It's become, I'm just getting rolled right in the cake, the cake being the bone, is that clear?
Well, the, the bond war, that's ineligible for the revenue as part of the budget request and all of that.
Okay.
We're reusing capital funds, we're, we're able to keep everything that's already in fund three capital, we're living capital and then we'll drive the engineering department that we set within our home loan budget. So, so it counts, so.
Okay, that's what I want here.
How am I okay with that as long as we're treating it in our particular contract?
And this was a what again? Administrative what?
Just administrative error. We just overlooked the coordination aspect with the, the sub.
So you split the difference with us, right? That's usually what they say to me when we're talking about a house.
Well, I.
I made a mistake, all right, well, you get a free screen in court.
I'm, I'm just happy I wasn't coming at the neck of the world, patting hands, saying we made a mistake.
Keep it in mind moving forward.
All right, we got it.
Please. All right, so who wants to make this motion?
Motion made by Mr. Avalos.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Starkey. Are all those in favor?
Aye.
They are? Any opposed? None? Motion carries. Thank you.
If I, if I may just have one minute, about, it was about a year ago that we, we were meeting a lot of y'all for the first time. We were coming in for the interviews, we didn't really know each other very well and just want to let y'all know that it, from Freez and Nichols standpoint, it's been a, it's been very positive working with the board and, and working with everybody on staff. And so we just want to let y'all know that we, we really appreciate the opportunity to be here. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thanks for all your efforts, too. Thank you.
That takes us to item 14, consider and discuss for possible approval, budget amendment for engineering services.
All right. Now, this amendment is just to keep our general ledger accounts on track with the actual purchase orders. I have Island Avenue and Tarpon and that's just to match up with the, the Cornet construction that's in progress, just to keep water within 34, which is water infrastructure and keep sewer within 35, which is sewer infrastructure. And then the chlorine dioxide budget, I went ahead and.
Second.
There you go.
Made by Mr. Houston, second by Mr. Starkey. Are all those in favor?
Aye.
They are? None opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item 15, consider and discuss for possible approval of the financial reports for December 2019.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Houston, second by Mr. Starkey. Are all those in favor?
Aye.
They are? None opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item 16, consider and discuss for possible approval of the purchase of an aeration motor.
Chairman, members of the board, we need to purchase a motor for the clarifier. The lead time is 24 months. One of these motors broke down last year and we replaced it, so we don't have any, any spare. So this one was approved on the budget and the recommendation is going with Ovivo for the 22,978 dollars.
Ovivo is the only one that makes this car?
With the specs that we requested, yes.
Were they based out of Canada? Where's Ovivo?
They're in Canada.
Kansas?
Is this USA?
Oh, that's all right.
So I'll assume.
Yeah, well, that's the export.
That's right. Okay. I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion for approval by Mr. Starkey. Second by Mr. Avalos. Are all those in favor?
Aye.
They are? None opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item 17, consider and discuss for possible approval, the purchase of three trailers.
Yeah, we need to replace two of the current trailers that we have there. All, and we've been doing numerous repairs on them and we need to add one more for, to transport material that we don't have and sometimes we need to use the, the dump truck to do it. So with this new trailer, we, we want to avoid this using the dump truck. For this, we are recommending a warrant of purchase to Texas Trailers and.
Do you, do you know, do we get any warranty?
Yes, one year warranty on workmanship and materials.
For those trailers, maybe we ought to look into putting that coating on them. What's that, the, that liner, that undercoating?
Undercoating.
Linex, that's what it is. We should see what it is, that really extends the life of them for what we're using them for especially, just a comment. Motion for approval by Mr. Avalos, second by Mr. Starkey. Are all those in favor?
Aye.
They are? Any opposed? None? Motion carries. Thank you.
Can we recover any money from the old ones?
Yes.
Ovivo or Canada?
Yeah, they'll go to salvage. Item 18, and you'll approve the mark as often as salvage. They'll be brought to the board as salvage.
Okay.
Or scrap, whatever.
Understood.
Consider and discuss for possible approval, the purchase of a dredging machine.
This dredging machine is to maintain the reservoirs that we have instead of doing corrective maintenance, doing preventive maintenance. For this one, we are recommending going with Geoform International for the purchase of that dredge machine.
Is this a hydraulic rig or a mechanic?
Uh.
Is it a pump?
Yeah, it's a pump.
Only comment I have is again, you know, I see, I see the three bids and only one of them has a number associated with it, especially the number is a, of greater than 100,000, I mean, even greater than 50. I'd really like to do a little bit more legwork, at least find one other vendor. I recognize the reasons I may finish that these vendors didn't want to give us a bid because their bid wouldn't be competitive. I want to just keep going until I find someone that is remotely competitive, just, I mean, just for public information purposes at the least, so that we're not only, you know, because the spirit of having a three vendor bid system is that we can.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
I just think it's in everyone's best interest if we make sure that we do the due diligence to come up with another number.
At the bottom of the table, there is a, numbers for the other two vendors with the similar specs what we have, because what we're requesting is a very small machine.
Mm-hmm.
Right? So based on that specs, there are the numbers for the other two vendors that didn't submit the similar specs what we have, because what we're requesting is a very small machine.
Mm-hmm.
Right. So, based on that specs, there are the numbers for the other two vendors that didn't submit a formal proposal, but we have previous quotes, and they came, and they look at the reservoirs, and they, they give us quotes. So, the numbers are, are there.
They didn't participate?
They didn't want to participate on that because they knew it won't be a non-competitive price for.
We not have enough, what, I guess I just want to dabble a deeper in this. Do we not have enough approved vendors to where we can find a vendor that would've given us a price? I just, when we get to this stage of approving monies to be spent for capital equipment, I just think it behooves all of us to have at least two vendors with a number associated with it. Does this, does this make sense? Even if that, that VMI was three-hundred thousand dollars, or at least we can show, you know, our people, does this make sense?
Yes, I mean.
Think that that makes sense a lot, it should be in there.
Do we know what kind of warranty?
It's a two-years warranty.
Good.
On, on the, on the dredge machine, and also on the engine on the, on the dredge.
Remember, we had talked about doing this in-house to save us the cost of going outside at like greater expense.
You're, you're saying that because it would make sense to go with this quote?
In the long run, yeah.
Just plain devil's advocate.
See, because it's a small machine, you have, you have size, or you have.
That's what, I mean, work and manager is not here, they, they, they look on this when we work on the budget, it, it won't work for what we have.
And it's something they can do if they got a guy to not do anything. Get out there, you know, it's not something you have to do seven days a week, you can do it a few days a week.
No, it's a, from what I understand, it's a constant motion, I mean, you can have it continually.
Well, what I'm saying is, yeah, you don't have to start and stop and do, complete the whole project within a certain amount of time.
And, and I, I've seen the, the sludge, and it's not a whole lot, that we need a bigger machine, just that one, if you, they run it, you know, more often as they need it. I think it'll do the job, because there's not a whole lot of silt buildup yet, but it will get to the point where it'll affect the pump stations, where that, that's where the, usually the silt and sludge build up, mostly because of the certain turbulence in there that, that doesn't get to the edges of the building, the bottom of the concrete slab, and they need to go in and clean it up with that small machine, so.
Again, just to be clear, I'm all about supporting our district, giving our guys and girls what they need politically. I just think it behooves us to have at least two numbers.
Oh, yes.
Maybe if we can get the second one, tighten up the specs to make sure, you know, we're specifically getting what, what we're, the bids are specific, not generic.
I mean, the, the specs on the RFP, I try to do it as general as possible, not too tight and to a brad or a.
Yeah, that's a good practice.
Maybe, so we can get, maybe we should, you know, may, be a little tighter with it, so we can, because, you know, that will bring us back more results, hopefully. Maybe we're being too broad.
We'll do our best for.
Maybe we're being too broad in our.
To get, get more, the, the two extra bids that we need.
Right.
We'll, we'll do better on, on the next one, because.
It's an excellent point, and it's, it's what we see.
We need to keep looking until we get.
When they say it's a non-competitive price, do we have to divulge what the other bidder gave? Like, I know he's gonna do it for a hundred and eleven, I don't need to tell him that he's doing it for a hundred and eleven. What's your price?
Twenty-nine.
Two-fifty, you know? Does this make sense? So the non-competitive price, I'm not gonna give you a number, you, you understand what I'm saying? Like, I'm not gonna tell you what he's doing.
Unless legally I have to. Pretty much match the price, and then once you do.
I'm just reading the verbiage that was given as a result of us not having.
They know, uh.
What their competitors gave it for?
Yes, they know, they say, okay, this is looked for the dinosides.
I get it.
So they know.
I get it. I know when somebody calls me and they say, I gotta build in Brownsville, I was like, go build in Brownsville, we'll see you later. I get it. But, again, get me. You know, we need numbers. So, with all that said, enough discussion on my part.
Yes.
I, I make a motion to approve.
Motion for approval by Mr. Starkey, second by Mr. Avalos, are all those in favor?
Aye.
They are, none opposed, motion carries, thank you. Moving on to nineteen, consider and discuss for possible approval, the purchase of tower climbing equipment.
On the last page of these.
Motion made by Mr. Houston.
This one has three numbers. Which one did we pick?
The first one, the thirteen thousand.
Love it. Second, Mr. Houston.
Seconded by Mr. Starkey, are all those in favor?
Thank you.
They are, none opposed, motion carries, thank you. Moving on to item twenty, consider and review expenditures from January fifteenth, twenty twenty through February fifteenth, twenty twenty.
Move, we acknowledge.
A motion to acknowledge by Mr. Houston, seconded by Mr. Starkey, all those in favor? Yes, none opposed. Item twenty-one, I don't think we have anything, do we?
No, sir.
Item twenty-two, no action. And item twenty-three, we'll adjourn this meeting at six forty-four PM.